Please be aware of the fire exits in the event of an emergency. Please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs to the left of you, and please do not use the elevator. The workshop is being recorded by our ICAT department, broadcast on Spectrum Channel 1303. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda with copies near the door if anybody needs a copy. And please call the first case or the agenda. I'm the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda. Case number PB 2023-08-1, request by Titus Management Corp. for signage approval to replace existing signage on premises 745 Titus Avenue in the mixed-use commercial district. Push the button. Yep.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Frank Romeo. 745 Titus Avenue is our office, and I am here to talk to you. I'm also the owner of the building, the daycare building at 745 Titus Avenue. This building, just so you know, I'm sure you know you've been here, but I'll give you a quick history. My family built this building in 1968, 1986. We received a variance to operate a daycare center there, and we have continuously had a tenant or tenants that have operated child daycare center there. We've actually had three of them. And now Karma Care, which is why we're here tonight to talk about their signs, they'll be the fourth operator of this site. We have done very minimal changes to the site. We've just done some painting and changed some floors, and we'll be calling it in. We've already spoke to the building department. We'll be getting an updated C of O from them, plus some other licenses from the county health department for the kitchen that's there. We'll be getting an electrical final inspection, just to update that, and then the county daycare licensing people come in and they'll do their updates again. But we've had all these licenses and permits in the past. The signs that we are proposing are actually just changing the name of the signs. We have a directory-style sign on the north side of the building, the Titus Avenue entrance, and that was, that has been there. We obtained a permit for that around 2,000. I just finally found the permit today, but we did have a permit for that. So we're just changing the name on the sign. The last name was Jack and Jill Daycare Center, and this is going to be Karma Care. You can see from the photo on there. On the north side of the building, also the Titus Avenue side, we get after-school kids dropped off in a school bus there, and they're the ones that primarily use the door on the Titus Avenue side. It's a double-glass door. It's been there with a transom above it. That door is always locked. And there was a sign there previously, and it took up the full transom. I have yet to find that permit. It's from 1986 somewhere, but we did have a permit for that. We are proposing a smaller sign on that. If you take a look at item D, the very first page labeled one, you can see their logo with a little bit of Starburst white on the outside. That's the sign we're talking about right now. The rear, or, and item number three was the first sign I spoke about. It kind of went out of order here. That's the freestanding sign at the driveway. And then the rear of the building is really where all the action is, where folks drop their kids on it, you know, in the morning, early in the morning, and pick them up in the afternoon. And there's another sign that's going to just direct them in there with, again, same as the front. That's the quick version. There is no long version. We're just changing the name.
Is there any lighting on the monument sign? I don't see any.
There is no lighting on it. There's enough illumination from the building mounted lights that, we don't need anything on there. There's never been a problem, never been a light there before, so we're not proposing that.
Okay. Is this basically because it's in the muck, town staff?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? I don't have any. Thank you.
This is like, this is like the best meeting I've ever been to in 45 years of doing this.
Very efficient, right?
Well, I'm not going to go that far. Hey, we're efficient here at the meeting.
Talking about the meeting. I'm not sure I agree with.
No, no, the meeting's very great. You're all very pleasant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I'll see you in two weeks.
Next case, Michelle.
Next case is case number PB 2023-.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I wanted to introduce you all to Dambadique Martin, who's the operator of Karma Care. She's been in the daycare business for approximately 20 years, and she is the new operator. I wanted her to come introduce you, and I didn't do it. I apologize.
No problem. Best of luck. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you for picking Aronikoi.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 2023-06-5, request by Salvatore Lichardello Esquire, acting as agent for B and R Breeze Enterprises LLC, for preliminary final site plan approval for a change of use to operate a restaurant or eating establishment, drinking establishments, with seating provided for more than 30 patrons on premises 4348 Culver
Ah, Tess. Yes, seriously. So did anyone not get a chance to read the letter I submitted? I just don't want to be too redundant if I don't need to be.
I did read it, but if you don't mind, just watch.
Absolutely. So the very first point I made at the outset was about this entire application. You know, I was talking with a town attorney, Mr. Fantuzzo, and, you know, I posed a couple of questions that we were both really scratching our heads on. First one is, well, if this board imposes a condition of, a condition of site plan approval, let's just put everything else aside. If this board says, you got to tear down that dumpster enclosure and replace it, what would the effect of that be? The landlord doesn't consent to that. You know, we submitted his letter as well. And I analyzed the law to mean, well, once he starts tearing that first plank down, landlord could call Aronikoi PD, have him arrested for destruction of property, and press charges for breach of contract, property damage. They'd also have to pay attorney fees per the lease. And the town attorney agreed with me. He said, yeah, you're right. The landlord could have him arrested for destroying his property. It's right in the lease agreement.
Do you have that in writing, that our attorney said that your client could be arrested?
I don't have it in writing. I just spoke with him on the phone this afternoon, and I'm sure you will all talk with him more afterwards.
When he's here next, in two weeks, you'll repeat the same story, and he'll agree with you, correct?
Absolutely. Unless he changes his mind since this afternoon. We talked on the phone around 3 o'clock, so. I understand, though, right now that's hearsay, because I'm telling you it's someone else said, but. But it is true, though. It's not the applicant's property. None of the tenants in that plaza have any authority to make a single alteration to the site. It's right in their lease agreements. It's also a property rights issue. Only the plaza owns that property. Every inch outside that building is common area maintained by the plaza. So I started digging into this. Well, well, how are we here? There's a change in the use, right? The other restaurant that was there was permitted under subsection 12. The, now we're under 23528A8, so it's a different section. It's a different use, right? The use changed. But you see here, I cited that the authority this board has to require a site plan application is predicated on a change in the principal use. Now, just knowing what the word "principal" means, I thought, well, there can only be one principle, right? The town code defines it twice. Once under "principal use," which defines as "the main use of land or structures is distinguished from a secondary or accessory use." There's no definition in the town code of what a secondary use is. There is an accessory. Obviously, the blue palm's not an accessory use. There's another definition, a "use, comma, principal," which is "the specific primary purpose for which the land is used." Again, both these definitions say "the" principal use, not "a principal use" or "one of many potential principal uses." They both say "the" principal use. Now, it was my opinion in the beginning that, well, the principal use on this property is a plaza, right? It's one tax parcel, one address, and the town code in a C business district delineates that as a principal permitted use. Under 23528A10, it's a combination of two or more of the uses permitted in this section on the same or contiguous lots, including, but not limited to, development and use commonly known as a shopping center or plaza, with an area threshold of 10,000 square feet gross leasable area, which this property, this plaza, fits within that definition. So it's my opinion that "the" principal use, again, it's, it can't be, I mean, if the blue palm is its own principal use, then that necessarily means there are four simultaneous principal primary uses on that property. We also have to reconcile that fact with the fact that one of those uses is above the other three. The other three are subordinate to the principal, to the plaza. Only the plaza has authority to touch a single blade of grass outside of the partition portion inside that primary building. So it's my opinion that a tenant inside of a plaza is not subject to a site plan review. Now, I tested that. I searched Westlaw. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. It's a tool that us attorneys use to search all cases all over the country. So I searched throughout New York, multiple search terms, so lessy and site plan. So it's any document, any case where the words "lessy" and "site plan" occur in the document gets sent to me. Lessy and site plan, tenant and site plan, lessy and planning board, tenant and planning board, and I could not find one single case where a tenant entering an existing commercial plaza was subject to a site plan review. The only time that comes into play is when the structure's being enlarged.
So is your contention that you're not to be here tonight?
As crazy as that sounds, yes. I, I mean, I really, I don't think that if this board were to render a decision that it would be enforceable. I really, I mean, I, I know that sounds crazy. We've been here for three months.
So let me, let me try. So I don't think we can discuss legal, I mean, you know, you got the.
Absolutely.
We don't.
Right.
I think we need a lawyer here to discuss those points. What I would rather discuss is, why do you think it's not needed? Do you have some other information?
Absolutely.
Neighbor and so forth. So I think if we approach it.
Absolutely.
Why it's not needed. And if we want, I think we're going to ask the staff to ask, you know, our, our legal to please weigh in on this as far as.
Right. And to that end, I just want to make one other point. Let's.
Let me, let me finish.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
On a site plan.
We have, we have done this before, so there is precedent. And there's probably precedent where we have and where we haven't, to be honest, okay? Putting that aside, you know, and all the legal aside, what are the reasons why you think it's not required? And then what are the other things that we have to address tonight? So at least we can get those out of the way, I think would be the best, because we can't discuss the legal matter here today.
Absolutely.
And I'll defer to town. Am I correcting my assessment there? Town staff?
Yeah, I would say yes. Also, I have some thoughts, but I can also wait till the end.
Okay. That's perfectly fine. Just one more point to the whole underlying facts that brought this application here. In the same plaza that we're in, Highbreeze Smoke Shop, they opened up, I think, I think they got their approvals like a month or two before we submitted our application. There used to be a print shop there, which is a separate permitted use. It's under 11E, appliance and electrical stores or printing shops, that was their use there. I don't know what a smoke shop falls under, but it's clearly different than appliance and electric store or printing shop. So we had a change of use right next door to us, and no site plan review. So either I'm wrong, or, you know, you're either I'm right, it shouldn't be subject to site plan review, or I'm wrong, and the standard's not being enforced equally. And I would have an issue with both scenarios. Setting that all aside, assuming the board's right, I still don't think this dumpster enclosure should move. All right. First of all, it's been there for a long time. I'm not sure, I mean, I was probably still in middle school when the thing got built. Joe Catalani bought the building. I think he told me that, or not, it wasn't him and his partner, his 4348 Culver Road. They said that that enclosure's been there for at least 15 years. He wasn't sure exactly when. But he said that it's been approved by the town subsequently. I cannot confirm that. It's just what I've been told by the property owner, so take that for whatever it's worth. But it's been there for 15 years and hasn't caused any issues. It's also, right now, it's made out of wood that's painted dark brown, surrounded by trees. So what we have is an enclosure, a structure, that's made of the same material and the same color as the natural landscape, landscaping features that surround it. Now, I think that's beneficial. My opinion doesn't mean much. The town code, site plan review, the criteria that this board shall apply, singles that out. Section 23584A22 dictates that the planning board shall consider the aesthetic and architectural, architectural qualities, particularly building styles and construction materials used as they relate to the surrounding natural environment. The current enclosure meets that goal. And, I mean, plainly, just objectively, an artificial construction material of a different color would, would not meet this goal. It would not relate to the surrounding natural environment and be less compatible. To illustrate that, I included some pictures. You have an aerial view on Google Maps. You know, we were looking at it when I was on the phone with the town attorney, and he's like, where, where is the enclosure again? I'm looking at it on Google Maps, and I can't find it. I'm like, yeah, that's the point. It blends in. It's, and you look at the survey or the site plan that we submitted, you can see it's covered by a mature tree. You look on Google Maps, aerial view, you can't see it. When you look at the street view from the east of the property, you can see there's a really big tree, and it's right up against the tree, and, you know, it blends in. It's the same material, same color as the trees that surround it. So I think what we have now is a structure that meets the objectives of the town code. And also, it's a lawful pre-existing structure that we have not proposed any alterations to that would allow this board to order it torn down. You know, if we were to say, well, we're going to be producing a lot of garbage, we're going to get a second dumpster in there, and we're going to make the structure larger, now we're enlarging a lawful, pre-existing structure, which is not allowed. And this board would have authority to say, no, if you want to do that, you got to move it somewhere else, and maybe then, if it's on a different spot of the property, it might make more sense to change the construction materials. But as it is now, it meets the objectives of the code. The town code talks about dumpster enclosures, and they say that a dumpster enclosure shall be built as to provide screening from neighboring property. It's the only purpose of a dumpster enclosure. There's nothing else listed there. It's not, you know, as to provide screening and be durable, or and be of the construction material that the individual members of the planning board prefer. It's just as to provide screening from neighboring property, and it accomplishes that goal. It's not see-through, it's not like dilapidated. It screens the dumpsters. You can't see them when you're walking by. I mean, if you jump up, you can look over the enclosure, but it's out of, out of sight. You know, and I'd also like to point out, you know, I've laid out all these objections. This board's given us lots of comments, and we actually did perceive some of those and incorporate them. When we were here, the board pointed out, well, there's a, one of the dumpsters is outside the enclosure. Based on this board's comments, we had that dumpster removed. There was, it was a dumpster from Highbreeze. They had one brought in. And so the dumpster's in the enclosure, and the dumpster outside the enclosure are both getting picked up once a week. We talked with them. They, we had that dumpster removed, so we're now sharing the dumpster, and it's getting picked up twice a week. So there have been improvements made here, things that are within the applicant's control that we happily did. But we have no authority to tear down that enclosure. And, you know, we, we would be forced to appeal that, that decision if this was a condition imposed on the site plan, assuming that we are going to go forward with the site plan. I mean, we would really be stuck between a rock and a hard place. Either we're disobeying the town, or our landlord's going to sue us for destroying his property. You know, I mean, it's, I don't know that he would, but he has every legal right to do that, which I think just illustrates the underlying issue with this application. But, so. And then again, one more point really quick. The neighbor next door, Lynn Sheehan, we talked to her. She was strongly opposed to seeing it torn down. She looks out at that enclosure every single day, and frankly, her personal tastes and preferences are the only opinions that this board should be weighing, because she's the neighbor directly east of it, and she's going to be affected by that structure. To the extent that any individuals involved in this application have a preference over a certain building material, I think her opinion is really the only one that's appropriate to consider here. Can you tell me why there's two addresses on this letter? On which letter? The one from. Oh, well, so I talked to her personally. You know, I talked to her for like an hour at the corner. It was right after I talked with Jim and Greg the first time. I ended up talking with Jim and Greg like three times, but. And I talked to her about it, and, you know, that's when she expressed her opinions, and I said, well, would you be willing to come to the town board meeting or planning board meeting and, and speak? And she was like, ah, I don't know, it might be weird with my neighbors, but I'll submit a letter or something. And I said, great, well, would you mind writing a letter? And she said, well, I already told you everything. Can you just write it up and I'll sign it? And I said, absolutely. But when I did that, I got the address wrong. I thought it was on Mary Noel Park, but apparently her address is Duran. I didn't know that. So I wrote the wrong address when I typed up her letter, and that's why she crossed it out, corrected it, and initialed next to that, and then signed it. Okay.
Can I ask you to take a look at your lease?
I submitted that with our application.
Yeah, do you have a copy with you?
Actually, you know what? Yeah, I do have a copy of it.
Can we just take a look at clause?
Yeah, I found it, but I mean, if you got one too, or if you want to provide one to Mr. Richards.
I, I, it can't, it's with the packet.
Yeah, so specifically.
On, I don't know what page it is because it's not numbered, but clause 26. Can you just tell me what that means to you?
A tenant shall comply with all laws, orders, and tenant's use of the lease premises. I take that to mean that they have to comply with, with the town code, state law, federal law.
And requirements? And then if I go to clause 30E, could you take a look at that and tell me what that
Right, that they're responsible for maintaining the dumpster and sweeping up around it so they don't allow refuse to accumulate around the exterior of the area.
And what about the complying with provision in there?
Yeah, I would take that to mean complying with town ordinances relating to.
Okay.
Not storing enclosures out of the street.
Any approval from this board and any conditions, right?
I think that's a stretch personally, but.
So you don't think that the plain language of that would cover that? I'm just asking. If you don't agree, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, are you guys passing a local law with this application? That was what I would be in.
We're doing a site plan review, is my understanding. Am I wrong about that?
Right, it says complying with town ordinances related to gar, oh, it says garage storage, garbage storage removal. Relating to that subsection.
Any other legal questions before I get into the other?
No, but I got into that because he's telling us the landlord does not allow it. Well, the lease actually does allow you some flexibility.
Well, as far as keeping up that area.
From what I'm reading, it does. I mean, you're.
Well, the, the last section, I definitely disagree with you, says complying with town ordinances. I mean, I think that means more.
Also in the resolution that we passed for the referral to the town board. I think it is clause five on that. I think that we were willing to work with each other to mitigate any impacts, because this is a greater use, right? I mean, that's one of the reasons it's back here. It's, it's a more intense use.
Yeah, sure, more intense. That, that's also not what the code.
So that generates more trash, that generates more traffic, that generates more headlights, that generates a lot more stuff. So.
I, I agree with that, and I.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to like step on this board's toes. I mean, even though I am, like technically, but even, so, you know, the special use permit requires it to come in front of this board as well, so this board would still give its input, you know, but I also don't see any distinction.
We did give that input, and.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You guys took that.
Yeah, no, we did.
Right, and that, that still has to be reviewed by the town board, though, right?
Correct. We did not receive a special use permit yet. Next hearing is next Tuesday, a public hearing. I thought it was a workshop. So. Could we hear from the town regarding all of this?
Sure, I can give some additional context.
Sure.
Um, okay, first, the smoke shop. So I believe that, talking about the previous use to the smoke shop use, it was retail sales and service to retail sales and service, therefore, it's not a change of use. It's considered under the same umbrella from retail to retail. And then in terms of the change of use, so you could say it's a bar restaurant to a bar restaurant. However, when you look at our specific code, you go to the C district, you go to permitted uses, it says bar restaurant 30 or fewer patrons. Then it goes special use is bar restaurant with 30 or more patrons. So the Aronikoi town code treats those as two separate uses. If they didn't, then they would either be permitted or special use permit, but they are, they are considered separate. Obviously, it's, it's the same use in a sense, but it's an increase in intensity, and when creating the code, they felt that, that big of a change required more intense review, why it needs a special use permit. So that's why. And then when you go to the code for site plan review, as you all know, change in use is a trigger. As you all know, we did see that barber shop two, two months ago or three months ago that came, and they also were in the same boat of, we just are putting a new tenant in here, and we had to come. And then, if you all remember, they had parking that was in the, the right-of-way, and you all said, as a condition of this new tenant coming in, you need to re-stripe. You cannot have any private parking in the public right-of-way. And I don't know if that applicant has already done that. I knew that they were chomping at the bit to get that done. But that's an example that, and you all know, because you've seen this come up before. And so, and those lists is, those uses are plainly listed in, in the code. You know, the bar and restaurant 30 and under, bar and restaurant 30 and above, permitted use, special, special use permit.
Another, another recent example is the Octapharma application that we just did. Exact same scenario, change of use.
Great. And then, and then you all know, talking about the criteria in the code and that, you know, saying that this meets code, well, you know, if a site only had to follow the code, then we wouldn't need a board, right? And so you're sort of weighing this criteria and talking about this item that a site needs to be compatible with the natural environment. You all know that there are multiple ways. You all know that there are multiple ways that that can be met. And that it's sort of a weighing system, um, as well. So. Uh, also I'll note in terms of, um, having input from the direct neighbor that of course this is highly important and it's highly important in the current time. But as the planning board, you look at things long-term. That individual is not going to always live there. And so decisions should be taken through both a short-term and a long-term lens. Because as you know, sometimes things come for site plan review and you don't see them for a long time. And the community has to deal with whatever is there. Um, or as you see, when people don't meet the requirements of the site plan review. Um, and how long those issues can remain. And so, and then yes, as, um, member Richards had mentioned, during the special use permit discussion from the board, you did all say that this is an appropriate use. Makes sense for the district, makes sense for the location. However, um, the one sort of outstanding item was impacts to the adjacent neighborhood. And that you all felt that, um, this board could adequately address any potential impacts through conditions or measures via site plan review to keep that in mind. And so if there are any additional questions, let me know.
Okay, so as far as I know, Mr. Lucidot, we're going to go forward with the site plan review. If you want to have discussions with legal as to whether that's warranted, that's, please handle that that way, but.
I'm going to go out tomorrow and buy a plaza in Ironicoid, because man, what a deal. You build the structure and your tenants are just going to have to keep your site up to the latest and greatest site design criteria forever.
So I'd like to proceed tonight and try to get to the matters at hand so we could have some discussion on them. Having said that.
Can I just respond to a couple of the points that Ms. Powers made?
Sure.
Okay, um. So. Sorry, was I interrupting her? So I don't know about the other example that got brought up about the farm or whatever. You said Octapharm it was or?
Octapharma, yep.
Octapharma, okay. So I mean, I, I would posit that those probably should not have gone through site plan review as well if they were not enlarging or altering the structure. I mean, I, I still think that's the case. Again, the tenants in a plaza don't have the authority to make the changes that this board would require. I mean, it's, that, that's a property rights issue. And to the extent that, you know, Mr. Richards pointed out that it says in there, you have to comply with the law and local ordinances. It doesn't say anything about a, a site plan review or, you know, if, if the town says you can take down a structure, then, then go ahead. And also says in there too, that they can't alter structures without the express written consent of landlord. And I, I know this board's done a lot of applications like this. I also represent the owner of five plazas in three different municipalities. And I've been around the block with tenants changing over as well. The only time we ever had to go through a site plan review was when a Dunkin' Donuts wanted to come in and they wanted to install a drive-through, enlarge the parking lot and, and do that. And there was a joint application submitted by the landlord and the tenant in which, you know, the tenant provided the landlord's consent as well as an agreement outlining, you know, who is going to pay for the costs and how that was going to work. But once a plaza is approved, it says right in the code that it's a, a collection of enterprises of permitted uses in a C business district. That any use that's permitted in a C business district can go in that plaza without site plan review. And those lit, those items listed under special use permit, they have the additional hurdle of applying for a special use permit in which the town board and planning board both get their hands on it and can make recommendations. I also want to point out as far as change of use goes, I, you know, it, it's not well-defined in that section of the code that mentions it, but it is mentioned in definitions. The definitions say that a change, a, a change of use is a change in the nature of occupancy or use. Doesn't just say a change in the use, but a change in the nature of the occupancy or use. I'm going to tell you that it's my opinion that a nature of uses are all those uses that are delineated in each individual district. So all the uses in R1 are of a, a residential nature. All the uses in a C business district are all of a commercial nature, they're of the same nature. And any of those uses can go in an approved plaza unless a special use permit is required.
So, so, Mr. Lucidot, I'm trying to figure out one thing here. Okay, so we're here to do a site plan review. I understand you don't believe that's warranted. The town staff is telling me it is. We can either continue to do the site plan review and hopefully get you where you want to go and get this business moving. Or we can continue to argue the point. I, I'm, I'm willing to go forward. And what I'm looking for is, Lobella has created a letter regarding the site plan. Could you please walk us through this?
Sure, just give me one moment.
No problem. While she's looking for that, can I, on the site plan application, I want to make a, a comment about the dumpster enclosure. I cited some case law here that when the, the planning board imposes a condition on a site plan, it has to be reasonably designed to mitigate against a demonstrable defect. I don't think there's any demonstrable defects in that dumpster enclosure here, aside from the fact that you guys all think it's ugly. But that's not.
I don't think you heard one of us say that. And for you to characterize our conversations is not in your interest.
No, I, I apologize if I mischaracterize it and I, I, I use, you know, I dumbed it down a lot, I apologize. But this, a few of the board members at the last workshop meeting said that it was their personal opinion that they thought a block enclosure looked better. I guess it wasn't that.
I think that that's what we said we have imposed on every other structure that has come before us. And you were the one that objected to it. But I think we still have some conversation. I'm going to turn this back over, this is still our workshop, so I'm going to let the chairman run it.
So I, I'm going to put aside your objections to the site plan. You submitted one, okay? So could you please go through your comments?
Sure, I can.
And then we'll discuss as a board after, so.
Okay, so from our, um, letter from June 26th, which I believe some of these have already been addressed, some of them are still relevant because I believe that the site plan that was submitted in June is the same as the site plan that we have in front of us today. The first item were just some items related to, um, seeker. And I believe that the applicant did make all of these revisions under item one. Two, parking requirement, um, this was deferred to town staff. Because obviously there are multiple uses in this building, therefore the onsite parking has to accommodate all those uses. And that any variances moving forward need to take those into consideration. So when you're calculating, um, the required parking for a site, you have to include all the uses, it's not just one use.
That's what they want in front of the zoning board though, correct? So it's already been approved?
Yes, they've already gotten their, uh, parking variance. Yes, so some of these are no longer relevant. Offsite parking, we had, um, some questions on these. I believe that they were answered, let's see if I can remember or not, uh, going through these. So there are unmarked parking spaces, I believe it's like gravel on Mary Noel. Um, I believe that those are in the public right of way. Okay. And then we said, is there an access agreement between the applicant and these unmarked parking spaces? No, because I wasn't sure if it was privately owned or not. And it's publicly owned, so no, there isn't any sort of access agreement. I believe that, um, there's an understanding that those parking spaces are first come, first served. That nobody can, you know, allocate them towards a specific business and that they're just open because they're on the public right of way. Identify users of unmarked parking area. I believe that that, like mentioned before, first come, first serve. I would assume it's mostly probably the businesses that are around, um, that area. And then owner of parking spaces along the north side of the building, we know that those are, um, also in the public right of way, even though they're right adjacent to the building. So it can be confusing, people could maybe think that they're related to that private property. But as you can see, um, on the survey, those are not on private property, they're in the public right of way. Screening, um, this was something that we, we had brought up, um, on the east side. There are, there are some, um, shrubs that are already there. Um, I think that this is something that the applicant had come forward and said, this is usually where we have our snow storage. So I think that's something for you all to weigh, right? Of, okay, do we want some additional landscaping? Do we maybe want to concentrate landscaping maybe towards the roadway as opposed to more interior? Do we want to put the landscaping, you know, um, where the headlock, the headlights will be blocked from the residents, et cetera? So just something to keep in mind of what might be appropriate there if additional landscaping is appropriate. Or, or a fence or a whatever, but just maybe potentially thinking about some additional screening there. We wanted to confirm that a front-loading sanitation truck services the property. I believe at the public hearing, the owner came forward and said, yes. Just because I don't think a sidearm is going to work in there. It can just kind of go in, get it, get it out and come out. Since there isn't a lot of room to maneuver, uh, within that, uh, parking lot. And then ADA parking, um, something we still haven't really figured out. But it seems the applicant is willing to work with us. It's not that hard of just like, if these are the parking spaces we have, sort of figuring out what the best location for those are. Because I believe that the two ADA parking spaces are near a door, which is good. However, I don't believe that is a public entrance. So, um, we're still working towards that, especially since it seems like the maybe best location for these ADA parking spaces are within the public right of way. And DPW is not about that. So, um, those are some of our just initial thoughts on this. Not necessarily prescribing anything, but I think probably some good points of discussion for the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So having said that, does the board have any opinions? I'll gladly go first if I could, because I wasn't here at the workshop. So I went, well, first off, I think the applicant, prior to this disagreement on site plan or not, has been very cordial in responding to the town, the residents and all of the issues. And I went and looked at the site. I personally think, I, I don't think any additional screening is required. That's just my opinion from looking at it. In addition, I actually think the dumpster is fine. I looked at it, it's, it's kept up, it's not a wreck. I had a big problem when the dumpster was outside the dumpster. But since you're telling me that's been resolved, I'm okay with it. So I just wanted to put my feelings out there because you seem to think we have a predisposition. There's a whole board here, okay? So everybody has difference of opinions. So I want to make sure you realize that. Okay, so, Mr. Clovis, go ahead.
I, I too was not here for the previous, uh, workshop. I, I don't have any problem with the dumpster enclosure as is, I think it's an existing operating dumpster enclosure. So I'm not in favor of forcing any requirement there as long as there's no dumpsters outside of it. My only point is really a staff point. Has Director of Public Works had any comment or had this referred to them for review of the parking that's in the right of way? For their feelings, comments?
Yes, Aaron's, Aaron's commissioner's been made a, a breast of things that have been going on with the Mary Noel parking. They did also depict other areas within the location of the Blue Palm that have, um, additional public parking that is within distance, walking distance to the Blue Palm as well.
So Director of Public Works is okay with the seven or eight or nine, whatever it is, spaces on the north side of the building that are three quarters in the public way?
I believe that, uh, Commissioner McGee sure is fine with it. But I, I think that the major point was that there cannot be any signage that certain, um, establishments cannot like reserve these, that it's like, because it's public property, anybody can park there.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was a discussion. Okay, thank you.
One other point, you did get a parking easement with the establishment across the street, right? I saw that in the package also.
Yes, it was a license, yeah. And I just wanted to add to as far as like, you know, business can, you know, exclude others from parking in the right of way. The neighbors on Mary Noel can either. But, you know, we heard that that was a chief concern, a lot of those people don't have driveways, they rely on the right of way parking. You know, legally speaking, they can't say, well, no, this is my town right of way, you know, it's all the town right of way. But, uh, we are going to put a sign up on the building. So, uh, you know, if you look at the map, the entrance to the Blue Palms to the north in front of the right of way. So people park there first. And then once all those spots fill up, they park in the plaza, parking across the street in the right of way. Once those spots fill up, they park behind. But we're going to put a sign up saying, you know, no parking in front of houses or, you know, residences on Mary Noel or something to that effect. Just to try to mitigate against any potential impacts to the neighbors' parking. Uh, because I know that was a, a chief concern.
So that's okay with the town? Because I heard you said no signs could be posted, so I just want to make sure.
I would feel most comfortable running it by DPW, but I believe it's more that the sign is so that it's not reserved for public use or for private uses rather than, I, I mean, I think it's fine to say, you know, oh, there's parking at park side or parking in the rear or, or whatever, no street parking. That's fine.
You know, Blue Palm patrons, please do not.
Please make sure you run that by the, the town before you post it.
Okay, yeah, that's, I brought that up at, at the ZBA and I, I think even the town board too. And they, no one raised an objection, but you make a good point though. Also with the handicap parking, I definitely understand wanting to have it closest to the door. As you laid out, it's in the right of way. It's also on a pretty steep incline, that parking there. So much so that like grandma in her wheelchair would go flying right into Mary Noel. Uh, so I don't think, e- e- either way, I don't think that would be the best spot. And, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe access can be provided through that back door. I mean, they'd have to go through the kitchen. But I mean, just, I'm, to the extent that federal law requires any restaurant to make reasonable accommodations. I think that is something that if a handicap individual called the restaurant and said, hey, I'm parked outside, can I get in through this back door, someone could escort them through. But I, I, I'd have to check with, uh, you know, the operator to see if that's even possible. Because I don't know if that's walled off or not.
Okay, Mr.?
I'm going to tell you, I think because of the intense use, the additional traffic, and this is probably our only time to take a look at this dumpster enclosure because a special use will go with the property forever and ever, is that that should be more durable than a wooden, um, enclosure. And we've done this in the past to other tenants and had them put in a, a, a split block. But I'm one person, I just think the intensity of use is, is generated that for us. As far as the screening goes, if the neighbor's not feeling a real problem at this point, I don't know, like it's also the last chance we're going to have at that apple. So, because this, this property will be this forever now. I, assuming the town board grants them that, that use.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Verdic?
Yeah, just reviewing everything, um, the screening, I'm a hundred percent fine with the neighbor's opinion. I'm in the construction industry and, uh, split block comes in a lot of colors. So saying that, you know, it's going to, it could still blend in. It could definitely still blend in. But also with the argument put forth along with the neighbor, and, and I'm, I'm fine with it staying the way it is myself, um, currently. I do think the precedent we're trying to set for the neighbor, for the town is the new, you know, the split block. But this is a unique situation that could be, in my opinion, not enforced. So I'm fine with it staying the way it is, is all.
For, for, just for the record, since we're on the record here. The point I'd like.
Workshop, yes, yeah.
I know. The, the, the point I'd like to make, and this is not for the applicant in my mind, this is a general statement in response to what you said, Mr. Verdic. But yes, I think our precedent as a board has been clearly set over the last five years that any new dumpster enclosure is, you know, CMU, split face, something durable. So I just want to clarify for the record, we're not talking about wishy-washy here. We're talking about an existing dumpster enclosure that is not being modified now that the dumpster that was outside of it has been moved inside of it. So I just want to say that for the record.
Also, we did ask for a increase in pickups, which was given.
Accompanied it?
Yeah, it was accommodated by you guys, but, and also by removing the other one there. So that was something that you did, you know, you come forth with many things that I think the introduction to the neighborhood was probably the, a big wow to the neighborhood. And that's why the big kick in the beginning was a no. And then I think a lot of the neighbors have come around and, uh, it's definitely being more welcome to the neighborhood with the mitigation of everything, so.
Thank you. John?
Um, in terms of this, the, um, screening to the east, I have no issue.
In terms of the screening to the east, I have no issue with it. You know, for the dumpster enclosure from, you know, the early stages of the application, my only concern was the location and the public right-of-way. And it looks like in the letter from the landlord, he stated that there was some agreement or permission that was done with the town 15 years ago. So, if that is the case, then I'm good with it.
And what about the split block versus wood?
You know, if it was a new dumpster, I would understand doing it to that standard. But, you know, if it's a pre-existing dumpster and we're not, you know, expanding it to add, you know, additional items to the enclosure, then I'm good with it as is.
Any other comments? So, the whole board isn't here tonight, there is one missing. So I don't, I'm sure you may have heard his comments at the last one. So you never know where this is gonna go, but. So that's why I would just wish, as you go, before the boards, listen to them, okay? They aren't always what, you know, don't pre-conceive what we're thinking, so.
Absolutely. I know, at the last workshop meeting, three of the board members were here and I was getting the impression that the tides were turning against me here. So, that's why I had to come out swinging, but I probably shouldn't have.
That's why I started tonight. I think this application has gone through a lot of different things I can't speak to, but you have reacted to most of them very positively. If you feel there's something going wrong here, I do encourage that discussion with the town and the town attorney. But we're not lawyers, we're not gonna argue with it. If they tell us to do a site plan review, we're gonna do a site plan review.
That's what I did too. When I first got in, Donna said, you guys have to do it. And I said, okay, we'll submit it, so. Yeah, I just apologized that I was being kind of forceful as I was going through that, I just.
Well, you have to represent your applicant, I get it, so.
Right, I would be doing him a disservice if I didn't make any intelligible argument in front of this board and put it on the record. So I'm just trying to do my job, but.
Just remember, sometimes it backfires. But anyways, in this case, I'm glad, you know, you got the input. But, you know, there's gonna have to be a vote, and, you know.
Absolutely.
I can't tell you how that's gonna go on the night, but at least you got the input going forward. Yes, Michelle, you're looking at me. I don't have anything else, anything else? For the applicant? Do you have any questions for us?
No, if you are all satisfied, then I guess that's it for me.
Okay. I think that's it, you're all set, thank you. We're good for the workshop. Michelle, is there anything else? I saw we have minutes to read before the next minute.
Those have been pending.
I have one question for you. None of the tabled items are on the next agenda, was that on purpose, or?
Hi, so we are trying a new format for the agendas to try to make them more legible, easier to understand.
Is that allowed by code? No, but anyways.
So, because previously, you know, it would be one agenda, it would have two dates at the top, and then it would say, like, this was a workshop, these are public hearing. And sometimes those items for a public hearing would also go to the workshop. And so they're now separate. In terms of tabled items, I mean, other places that I've worked, they don't necessarily keep those on the agenda. However, I mean, if that's something that.
No, I just wanted to know if we were gonna see any surprises, is all I was looking for.
No, I believe that what is on the agenda, that was kind of the point too of like, everything that's on the agenda, that's what we're seeing. There's not anything on here that is not.
And actually, for the request for Blue Palm, was that not tabled? Or was that just held? I can't remember, that's why. I thought it was tabled.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the current items, have they been tabled in the past? And why aren't they labeled as?
Normally, we have to remove them from the table, so that's why I'm asking.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
I will definitely double-check that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And so, in that, just so I understand that. So, if there are additional items that are going to be on the agenda because they were tabled items, they will be on the revised format sheet. I'm just trying to understand, because I want to make sure, one, that the public understands what's happening, because we have some controversial things happening that I want to make sure the public is well-aware and well-informed about. And I just want to make sure that there isn't the feeling of, oh, well, it wasn't listed on agenda, and then all of a sudden, you know, they missed an opportunity to hear what's going on.
Sure, so, what is on the agenda will be heard and there will be no additions. We're, Labella's hoping that, we think Michelle is sometimes a little bit too nice in terms of deadlines, and that that's sort of, you have the deadlines so that then you can get the agenda out on time. You don't have, that you all can get materials with enough time, instead of, oh, we'll hold something, we'll put it on the agenda, and then we'll take it off last minute if they don't get it in.
So whatever we're expected to hear at the meeting will show up on this piece of paper?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
That's all I was looking for, I didn't want any surprises.
Right, so, just for another staff, I went to press today. I had to go to press today with the agenda, because it's gotta be posted 10 days before the actual public hearing. So, that's done, that's set. I can't accept anything else, and especially if it's a public hearing.
Okay. That's all I was looking for.
Yep, thanks, I just wanted to make sure.
And then.
Like, we have a tabled public hearing right now.
We, they've been all postponed by the applicant.
Were the only ones that can untable that? Could an applicant request to untable something?
They can request, we don't necessarily do it if we don't have the information. That is our prerogative.
I don't know, but I believe that an applicant can take themselves off the agenda.
No, that I believe, but.
That I can believe. The question is, can they force themselves to the agenda? And what would be our, you know?
I don't think so, but I'm also not a lawyer, but we should ask Steve.
I just didn't want a surprise, so. Thank you. I don't have anything else? Meeting's adjourned.